Councilman Nelson, leave us in the pledge.
The time now.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda is adoption of the minutes. The agenda that I have does not have the minutes from February 9th on it, which I believe were postponed for this meeting. Do you have an updated agenda?
Yes.
And does it have a copy of the minutes with it? Okay. Did everybody get an updated agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I give the minutes.
We've got a motion on the floor to approve.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, I'm looking at it real quick. I was concerned about the abstentions. I still see more than one extension, abstention, and so, you know, yeah, I can approve them. But ah, the correction would be I only abstained on the Herb Winfrey appointment.
That was at the last meeting. That was the point of contention. Didn't we get that cleared up?
Yes, the three resolutions that he questioned at the last meeting, the secretary did go through and listen to the tape, and I'd like to read what Mr. Mays said.
Okay, let's deal with it.
In his abstention. Mr. Mays indicated that I'm going to abstain, and I'm going to abstain because I said I wouldn't support it. To me, that would be a yes vote, but because it's Mr. Winfrey, I don't want to vote no. But Councilman Mays abstains for what he just put on the record. End of quote.
Yeah, but what about the Mr. President?
There are three resolutions in question here. One, five oh, one oh two, one oh three, and one oh four. And they were all moved together.
So, the record would reflect that the resolutions that was abstained to were all hooked together? That would be the appointment of the City of Flint Planning and Steering Committee Representative, Ms. Van Buren? I thought I supported Ms. Van Buren.
I think you did.
You remember that, Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Van Buren? Do you recall me voting in favor of you?
I'm pretty sure you did, because we were talking about it.
I'm pretty sure I did, too.
They were done together as in unison, as a group.
Well, I would still, um, I don't-
Do you want a copy of the recording?
Yeah, because I value my vote, and I know I tried to vote in favor of Ms. Van Buren. I think it was something else that I had voted in favor for. The only abstention was Mr. Winfrey, and that's what I recall. I could be wrong, but we'll wait. So I would move, I wouldn't, I can't approve them.
Two things, if I could indicate, if I could indicate to Mr. Mays, that it will take us a while because of all the other crucial things that we're working on to make a copy of the tape for you. Secondly, in the future, what I would recommend is that when you vote, you vote yes or no and not procrastinate, because the way this is, it had you kind of flip-flopping here and there, but at the end of the day, you indicated that you abstained for what you just put on the record.
Well, I really, Mr. Chairman, I really don't like the word flip-flop in politics, but as when I make a decision, you know, I kind of know what I'm doing. I purposely abstained on Mr. Winfrey. I purposely wanted to show Ms. Van Buren some support, and I think the only problem we have is whether or not we can listen to a recording and know if they was all moved together, because I don't think they was all moved together. And if you find out, once we have time, that they was not all moved together, then I hope that the record would reflect publicly in front of this or a different crowd that I was right again.
So, the motion on the floor right now is to approve February 9th to February 23rd minutes. Do you want to separate that so that we postpone the 9th?
Yeah, I would move, I would move to separate the 9th, Mr. Chairman, and move it to the next meeting, postpone it to the-
Is there support to move February 9th to the next meeting?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
It's been postponed to our next council meeting. So we've got February 23rd minutes. Is there a motion to approve that? Councilman Kincaid, you still move to approve that?
Yes.
It moved, and Councilman Mays, you still, or Councilman Nelson, you still support?
Support.
Is there any discussion on the February 23rd minutes?
Yeah, um, the February 23rd minutes. I ain't got no discussion on them at this time.
Okay. Anybody else have discussion? Here are none. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Are there any-
The vote is eight yes, zero no to approve the February 23rd minutes.
Are there any other communications to be placed on file?
Not at this time.
Council committee reports, we don't have to do that, so we can take that off.
Mr. President.
Just a second. Council committee reports do not have to appear on the agenda anymore. Mister, we have no appointments, or we do have two appointments, add-on number one and add-on number two.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I noticed on the minutes that, you know, whether it's petitions or unofficial communications or communications from city officials, it showed that we approved it and placed it on file. Now, I didn't make an issue of that as we just voted on the minutes, but I've never seen us approve to place on file. I have no problem at this point making motions, and I'm sure it will be voted to approve and place on file. But, you know, I talked to you about that a little bit, which you entertain a motion to approve and place the communications on file.
We've got a motion to approve and place on file. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Chairman, I think for the clarity of myself as well as the staff, I would like to understand a little bit better as to what he wants placed on file that's not already on file.
He wants to officially place them on file with a vote by the council.
Them meaning the minutes?
No, the unofficial communications, petitions, communications.
They're, that's why they're listed is because they are, in fact, placed on file automatically. That's why they're listed.
If I may, Mr. President, the minutes that I'm asked to vote on indicates that seem like they were approved and filed, and that's why I'm trying to help the staff, because we don't object to them being placed on file, but when it indicates that the council approved it to place it on file, I'm just trying to do some housekeeping in the future. If it shows up like that, it might reflect somewhere down the road that council did that.
We've got a motion on the floor. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Chair, I just need something for clarification before I vote.
Okay.
Exactly. Again, what are we voting on?
The motion is to place the communications on file.
Are the communications already placed on file?
They are, yes, they are.
Yes.
If I could, for the record, indicate to Mr. Mays, that any time a communication comes to the council office, before it goes on the agenda, it's assigned a number, resolution number, and then it is placed on file. That's why it's listed on this official communication, for historical purposes. In addition to that, with those kinds of communications, if the public is interested in getting a copy of that particular communication, they would be able to do so. Couple with that, if department heads want a copy, for example, if we receive a communication from the EPA, okay, of a notice of funding availability or something of that nature, in addition to calling the department to let them know that we just received this matter, we would place it on file. So that's what this document is, so there would not, when you vote on this, you're actually voting to accept all that we've already done.
Mr. President.
Just when we vote on what?
On the minutes.
Is there a part of the minutes?
No.
When you're separate.
When you accept-
Look, yeah, I mean, I understand what he's saying, I understand what you're saying. It's probably a matter of-
Yeah, Mr. Pre-
We're wasting too much time on something about nothing.
I think with the city being in the condition that it's in right now, we're wasting too much time on minutia.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. President, anytime I reflect in the record, I don't call it minutia. If the record and the minutes reflect approved and placed on file, it indicates to me and maybe somebody in the future that it was approved by council. If they want to change the designation as received by clerk and placed on file, then that would correct my concern. If the indication said received by clerk and placed on file, but any time the minutes reflect approved, then that seems to indicate to me something that I voted on. So it's not minutia to me. It can be minutia to anybody else who vote, but under discussion, as the discussion go back and forth, I'm trying to help, and I do clearly understand what's being said. So if the designation wants to be received by the clerk and placed on file, then I wouldn't concern myself. But when it say approved and placed on file, that seems to reflect on me.
Councilman Nelson, did that clear up anything for you?
No.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor, and that is to accept and place on file. It has been supported. Is there any other discussion? If it's not clear to anybody, I guess they'd vote no, and if it's clear, then they'd vote yes, and we'll move on. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Nelson?
No.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, two no.
All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointments, and we've got add-on number one and add-on number two. Is there a motion on the floor for either?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Nelson?
Make a motion to approve add-on number one.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve add-on number one, which is the appointment of Quincy Murphy to the Mass Transportation Authority. Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call? Do you have discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm proud to see Quincy Murphy get this appointment. He's put in time with this, you know, the community. He mentioned it to me, and I'm gonna support it. I'll support Quincy Murphy on this, and I congratulate it for coming forward. God bless this appointment.
All right. Any further discussion? Can we have roll call on add-on number one?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no for add-on number one.
Motion carries.
For Mr. Murphy.
We've got add-on number two, which is an appointment for Glenn Wilson to the Mass Transportation Authority. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Nelson?
Make a motion to approve add-on number two.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I did ask certain questions in the committee as a whole. This, our appointment is coming out of the eighth ward. I looked at the city as a whole. I respect Ms. Van Buren and the work she do, and since I believe that she says she knows this person, whatever is happening is here, I'm gonna trust Ms. Van Buren on this based on the way I know her and what she's saying to me, so I'm gonna support this appointment out of the eighth ward.
Is there any other discussion, Councilwoman Van Buren?
Yes, I would like to get a little bit more about Mr. Wilson. He is very active in the community, a lot of meetings that he attends, especially the master plan committee meetings, and also, he is the presidency-o of Communities First, which is responsible for the senior citizen housing complex that was built at the old Oak Street School. I think he'll be a very much a benefit to this board. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no, and add-on number two.
Motion passes. That brings us to licenses, which I believe one five zero, one fifty is a license?
We're not there yet.
The appointment is under resolution. It should be under resolution. Guess we'll just follow. Licenses, bonds, resolutions, we have one five zero, one oh eight. There's been a request from the administration to drop this particular resolution. Is there a motion to drop?
Move to drop, Mr. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, Mr. President, this is Mr. Wesley. This was the appointment of Mr. Wesley or the reappointment of Mr. Wesley to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, and I don't know what's going on with this appointment, but why it was moved to drop through you to the city attorney or the mayor or whatever. If it's dropped, and don't come back by the end of March, the term ends in March, but my memory serves me, if my memory serves me correctly, it can continue on without a reappointment until such time that that's taken care of, and/or under emergency manager law, the emergency manager can make the appointment in lieu of council. So if both of those things are right, then I'll wait to see what's happening. I simply had asked for a postponement. I wanted Mr. Wesley to come before the council. I say I wouldn't give out those type of appointments based upon the master plan. Mr. Chairman, through you to the city attorney, is it something that she wants us to know? I respect her.
No, are you, are you finished?
So I'll wait to see what happens with this appointment. From a council standpoint of view, I really hope that this council don't fumble the ball on making an appointment. I don't know who's requesting it to be withdrawn. Is it the mayor? Is it the council or who? Maybe the mayor can help me on it. I think that I've had some informal conversation, but it's being asked to withdraw, I mean, to be withdrawn. I don't know if they got a new person that they looking at, but I know Wes, Mr. Wesley had chaired the committee. He was the chairman of the Blue Ribbon Committee. I know Mr. Davis spoke about it last meeting. He's absent today. Mr. Kincaid said something about whatever that person from that ward said, and I said I don't move like that. So I ran into Mr. Wesley, and I asked him to show up, and I urged him to talk to people. So I'll just decide how I vote on this, and I'll watch this process, and any appointment that come before us, I like to make sure that we do them, because I've seen the emergency manager appoint people to the Bishop Airport Authority, the Hurley Board, and we've been waiting to do this. And so, unless somebody just gonna quietly let it go, or we gonna vote it up or down, but I'll see. But if it's some inside politics or something that I don't know, I want to know why and what. Thank you.
I think you asked three questions there, three specific questions.
That's correct.
Serve until they're reappointed. The emergency manager, under the law, assumes all responsibilities of the mayor and the council, so yes, he could appoint, and the mayor can probably better answer why he wants to drop. I've got Councilwoman Galloway, I kind of forgot, but it came to me real quick. I've got Councilwoman Poplar, and then I've got Councilman Kincaid. So maybe we can get the hall of questions out, and then mayor, if you want to come and speak to that one last one. Councilwoman Galloway.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood when this was discussed in the committee as a whole. I was under the impression that the mayor made the statement that he had had a conversation with Councilman Davis, which this is his ward, and after that, and Councilman Davis is on his way in, but upon the completion of that conversation, it was a mutual agreement with Councilman Davis that he would like for this to be dropped. The mayor concurred, and that, that is what I thought was shared in the committee as a whole, and so that was the reason why this is being presented to us today, to be dropped until Councilman Davis, and they can look at some other alternatives.
That's right.
But I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly.
That's my understanding as well. And Councilman Davis, we're talking about the appointment, the fifth ward appointment to the Planning Commission. I've got Councilwoman Poplar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, Mr. Davis. Mr. Wesley, and no disrespect to my colleague, but I've worked with Mr. Wesley over the years, and I think he's done a marvelous job on this board along with other boards, and right now, at this point in time, I don't know who wants to drop him, whether it's the mayor or whether it's Mr. Davis, but at this, my point, at this point in time, I cannot support dropping Mr. Wesley. I know the vote will go whichever way it goes, but to me, in my opinion, over the years, I've worked with Mr. Wesley, and I think he's done a marvelous job, so I have to stick with Mr. Wesley at this point in time.
Councilman Davis?
As I explained, in my, in my approach-
Turn your microphone on.
All right. As I explained, in my approach and my estimation of appointing Mr. Wesley, is I have to take heed into my constituents base. My constituency has a problem that Mr. Wesley was a part of the Blue Ribbon Committee. I did not know that this discussion was going to go on, because it was told to me that it would be taken, the resolution would be taken off the board, but since it's brought forth-
No, and let me just interrupt. That's what the discussion is, the motion has been made to drop it.
Oh, okay, well, I might finish what I was saying, though, since, I mean, you know, I can't stop now, but-
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know what was, what we were doing.
But my constituents and many other people in the community has a problem with Mr. Wesley being a part of the Blue Ribbon Committee. The Blue Ribbon Committee, we felt, and other people felt, that it was unconstitutional. It was not a part of the charter, and Mr. Wesley and the people that he had on the Blue Ribbon Committee, as him being chairperson, was making proposals that wasn't conducive nor was it beneficial to the residents in this city. Those proposals was pushed out very fast, and people had to make decisions that they was kind of felt a little regretful about in the end. So that's where my estimation of dealing with Mr. Wesley is at. It's not personal with me. It's more about what my constituents feel and the residents of this city feel in regards to that, so my decision would be predicated upon that, and that's where I stand, so that's, I yield my right to whoever is next.
Mr. President? Yeah, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. I wanted to know what this motion to drop was. I understand Mr. Wesley was the chairman of the Blue Ribbon Committee, but I also understand the seven-point plan. I had colleagues that voted in favor of the seven-point plan. I even had colleagues, in my opinion, that voted for a budget that included increased water rates. And so if I named Mr. Davis and others who voted for a budget that included increased water rates, when I was by myself saying, I don't want to vote on a budget that included increased water rates, under emergency manager law, some individuals have been damaged. And I'm telling you, I know Mr. Wesley for years, when he worked over with Ed Taylor at the-
Probation.
Probation and parole with Denise Smith Allen. This man is chairing a committee, and he's been damaged by emergency manager law, just as Councilman Davis and others. And I'm here to tell you this, you gotta be very careful when you get caught up in what you vote and what you stand for, if I may, because I'm gonna kind of take a-
Quickly, because-
It can be quickly, but after this, then we probably go into public speaking a couple more, and whatever we go to, I'm just getting tired of all of this quickly.
I understand.
So my, I understand, and so if this is gonna be quickly, then I'm gonna start doing quickly in the committees I chair, and I can easily do that.
Yep.
So my point is this, it's finna be a vote deciding. I lean toward the vote of Ms. Poplar. I also lean toward objecting what Mr. Kincaid said as it relates to what a person in the ward said. Now, my position is this, my job is to try to win on the side that I want, and so I do want to hear quickly from the mayor.
We're trying to get there, Councilman.
I know we'll get there, but remember, the mayor don't have a vote.
Right.
And this is a vote to push for pro or con, and I know how two of them gonna go. And I know that it's been two people so far, Mr. Kincaid and Mr. Davis, who seem, one says, I go for what that ward said. I go for what's best for the city, and I'm going for what's best for this council, because if they want Wesley, they'll keep him there, he'll serve without the appointment, and if they want Wesley, the emergency manager can appoint Wesley. So when you say move to drop versus move to postpone, I probably won't be voting to drop, because I moved to have all of them come before so we can communicate and get an understanding. We are the leadership of this city. We deserve to look out for the least of them who don't, it's people on this council who don't understand the magnitude of emergency manager law. I had a colleague tell me they voted for the amendment and didn't know they had voted for the whole budget, and I can get specific. So I'm saying this specifically to Mr. Davis, because he wasn't here in committee. He wasn't here when it first started out, now he done came in, so I got the, I ain't gonna keep it short, because it's been a lot missed by that-
Mr. President, question on the motion that's before us.
You can't all call for the question when somebody got the flow. That's out of order.
Mr. Mays, Mr. Mays.
Did you give me the flow?
Mr. Mays.
And if we got colleagues here, why is y'all so sensitive when I get to calling names?
Hey, Eric, Eric, if you just stay to the thing, let's get moving.
I am. I'm talking to the person who been missing in action from the council meetings.
Okay.
I'm talking to the person who is gonna influence Kincaid.
All right, say what you've got to say, so we can get moving.
Mr. Kincaid seemed to want to protect the way that I talk to a colleague. Protect me sometime. Give me the freedom.
I'm letting you move on if you'll move on. If you're not gonna move on, then I'm gonna rule you out of order.
I know y'all do, when you get to calling names.
And ask you to stop.
And saying who missing and who-
I'm gonna rule you out of order and ask you to stop.
It ain't out of order, it's facts.
Let's move forward. Say what you've got to say, and let's move on.
All right, well, rule him out of order for just blurting out, tubbing out, call for the question. That's out of order. You can't do it till you get the flow. That ain't proper. If he out of order, will you chastise him?
Just a second. What takes precedence, a call?
You gotta have the flow to call for the question. Watch this. You can't just blur it out. You gotta have the flow. See, that's the problem we get. Robert's rules the order. People been to UAW for 20 years and don't know. You gotta get-
Councilman Mays, I've asked you to just stop for like two seconds. Take a breath, then we'll figure out what we've got going on, and then we'll move on.
You got it, brother.
If you can't take a breath, then go somewhere else.
I'll take-
Take a breath there, and then come back.
I'll take a breath here.
Mr. President, I call for question on the motion to take action on the motion that's before us.
I understand what you're, what you're doing.
I'm asking what takes precedence.
This is what we're gonna do. Councilman Mays, you've got one minute to sum up. If you can't get it done in one minute, that's what you've got, is one minute.
Okay.
So we're gonna call the question.
In my one minute, can you let the city attorney say out loud what I already know? That you have to have... This is the one minute you gave me, now you interrupted me, let me sum up then.
You're using your one minute.
Well, thank you. Start the clock.
I have.
I know what the city attorney told you behind the scenes, but you want to protect Mr. Kincaid 'cause he's been up here for 20 years and in the UAW and don't understand Roberts rules. He was trying to protect Mr. Davis. And so, she told you that when somebody's been given the floor, you can't blurt out call for the question in a half-cocked way to protect somebody because I'm talking about who been missing meetings in the middle of the debate. So, if it takes me one minute to try to embarrass somebody who tried to embarrass me politically, thank you very much.
Are you done?
Getting sick.
The city attorney told me that you are not governed by the Roberts Rules of Order or the rules of our, the city council, that you are governed by an order from the emergency manager, which gives me discretion as to whether or not to allow you to continue on. Your one minute has expired, and we are gonna move on and call the question unless there's further discussion. The motion on the floor right now is to postpone. Is there further discussion? To drop, I'm sorry, it is to drop, I'm sorry. I was wrong. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Ms. Popla?
No.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, I'm sorry, seven yes, two no to drop.
Motion carries to drop. Next item on our agenda is 150150, which is a small wine maker and small distiller license.
Move approval.
It's been moved, is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
To approve. Tenacity Brewing. You can vote yes, you can vote no, or you can abstain. You can't... He's voting no.
No, I'm not voting no.
Go on to the next person. Go to the next person.
You don't have two votes, you got your vote. I pass.
Then he abstained, he's not passing.
He has to have a reason to abstain, but...
Then he's absent.
He's absent.
Markham is absent.
Ms. Popla?
If we gonna get out of hand, you gonna end up in court. My vote is for the people I represent, I pass.
Mr. Mays, I'm asking you, I'm asking you to take your seat.
I wouldn't care when you get to telling me how I vote.
Mr. Mays, you're out of order.
Chief, you wanna take me out, have the chief take me out, because I'm gonna stand for the people I represent.
Mr. Mays, I'm ruling you out of order and asking you to take your seat.
Okay, well, then don't speak my vote.
I'm ruling you out of order and... Chief, can you please ask Mr. Mays to leave the building?
Ms. Popla?
To leave the building or whatever you guys do with your business.
Okay, well, I'm gonna see, I want him to ask me, and when you ask me, chief, I'm gonna go, and it's gonna reflect on you, and Ron found out what I want you to do is make sure you said that he said my pass was a no, and then my no was an out. Now, get that. And then I hope I get to get my vote, because he ain't got but one vote. And I'll get arrested, I'll fight, go to jail when a council president tries to change my vote. He ain't got but one vote. So, chief, they asking you to do it, I'll stand here and let you do it officially. But I'm a fuss for the people I represent. If I say pass, it's a pass. It ain't a no. This is ridiculous. I'm a demand respect for the first ward. My pass ain't no no.
Councilman, I'm asking you to take your seat or I'm gonna ask you to be removed because you're disrupting the council meeting.
I ain't got no problem with that, so you backing up on what you said.
No, I'm backing up because I don't have my papers.
Because you don't know law. You gonna get sued.
It's on my desk.
Can I continue with the vote?
It's on my desk on the round table.
Ms. Popla?
On resolution 150150...
Tenacity Brewing.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
The vote is... It's seven yes, one no, and one that's questionable.
And one what?
The ma, the motion passes.
What was the, could you read the count back, Mr. Chairman?
The vote was eight, uh, seven, one, and one.
Seven, one, and one.
What am I recorded as?
As absent.
When you pass, then it comes back around and you can then lock your vote. I've seen that for years.
Councilman, I've never seen...
We'll deal with it in the minutes.
We'll deal with it then. 150155 was not brought forward out of committee. This brings us to public speaking. Do we have any public speakers tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, we have two public speakers. The first person is Mr. Chris Del Maroni. Mr. Del Maroni.
Good evening.
Is that on? Yep. Good evening, thank you. My name is Chris Del Maroni, and I live in Flint, Michigan. This evening, I'd like to address you as the chairperson of the City of Flint's Board of Review. As you may well be aware, the Board of Review is where property owners have the opportunity to appeal their assessed value and taxable value. This is going on this week. In addition to the assessed and taxable value, they can appeal their classification. There is a program available for veterans and also a poverty exemption. The concern that I wish to address this evening, and the, this appeal process is going on this week, tomorrow from three to nine, Wednesday and Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. What I wish to address today is on the poverty exemption and how it applies to the water bill. Residents can get relief on their water bill if they qualify under the poverty exemption rule, rule or guidelines. It has, there's two components. One is on the income. If they qualify there, then they have to qualify based on the amount of taxes they pay. So, it is possible for someone to qualify based on their income, but not qualify based on the property taxes they pay, because the property taxes have fallen to such a level that the city believes there's no relief needed. The problem with that is that for renters, there's no relief at all. This program is only available for those who own their home, it's their primary principal residence, and they live there. So, if you're a renter and you have a high water bill, there's no means to access this program. My suggestion is that council or the powers that be, look at that and see if there's a way to include renters. Obviously, you know, with the high rental percentage here in the City of Flint, you know, that might be a financial burden, because if they do, if they are granted relief, they're granted relief on the city water service and the city sewer service. And those are probably the largest portion of most people's bills. The water usage is relatively low compared, excuse me, compared to those charges. What I might propose or to start looking at is if somebody qualifies based on the income, if they're a renter and they qualify based on the income, that then they'd be given some relief on the water bill, irregardless of whether they own the home. This way, it would give renters an opportunity to, to get some relief from the city in regards to that water and sewer service fee.
Mr. Del Maroni, your three minutes have expired.
Okay, so if council will look at that or make a recommendation, it's just simply to help the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second and last speaker is Ms. Martha K. Grivann.
Good evening, Council. I'm here at the invitation of Councilman Davis. I'm speaking as a concerned Michigan resident and a concerned UAW member. And I'm speaking about Veolia, who has gouged your city under a $900-an-hour arrangement of $40,000 in hopes that it doesn't happen again. Veolia is the world's largest water privatization business, infamous globally for profiting at the expense of the environment and the public. Worldwide, consumers of Veolia's privatized water have experienced high prices, poor services, limited oversight, and the discouragement of water conservation efforts. Veolia has cost numerous municipalities millions of dollars in the cleanup of wastewater and untreated sewage dumped illegally into waterways, in damage to water treatment plants as a result of neglect, and injuries to workers, and in the unfair denial of pensions and other benefits. Veolia has been sued for breaking state contracts and overcharging, and overcharging residents. And I've got a, a document that I'll submit that I don't have time to read all of, but just to give a couple examples. In Indianapolis, the company's lack of safeguards led to a boil water advisory for more than a million people, forcing local businesses to close and school to be canceled for 40,000 students. Thanks to Veolia, Indianapolis has the second worst water quality in the whole country. In Kentucky, the cost-cutting led to diesel contamination in the water supply. The British Environmental Agency listed Veolia as the second worst polluter in Britain. Even in Paris, where the company is based, the city opted not to renew its contract for water services with Veolia. And this is, it's not just the environment and the water, but they're guilty of gross human rights violations. And I will just give an example that's very close to my heart. As a union, not only as a union member, but as the author of a pamphlet about the Flint sit-down strike, who had the opportunity to interview six of the no-longer-living survivors of that heroic battle. The Boston school bus drivers, who for almost 40 years have been represented by Steelworkers Local 8751, have battled a number of union busting companies, but none rivals Veolia. Four union leaders have been fired since October 2013. They did nothing wrong. They and their 800 coworkers tried to hold meetings with management at the four bus yards about union activities, a protected activity under the Wagner Act. Veolia bosses did not grant the meeting, but instead locked the workers out. They then singled out four union leaders for discipline. Next, after a June 30th...
Ma'am, ma'am, can you please wrap up your time?
Yes, I'm wrapping it up right now. They framed the grievance chair on felony charges. His trial ended Thursday with a verdict of not guilty on all counts, delivered in a mere 10 minutes. That tells us that Veolia will go to any length, even perjury, to put an innocent male, man in jail to break unions. And this city is so steeped in labor history, it is a travesty to ask the children and grandchildren of the heroes of the Flint sit-down to cough up money to go to one of the worst union busters in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Next item on our agenda is public, or no, we just did public speaking, council discussion. Councilwoman Poplar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the weekend, besides me being at Hurley Medical Center, I also did my laundry in Flint Township, because I can't afford to wash at home. And I also stopped at Kroger and Flushing, 'cause I can't shop at Kroger in Flint. And I did go by Myers, which is also going out of business. And I met Walmart, I'm all over the city, 'cause I'm just out there with my constituents and everybody else's constituents, and even those that don't live in the City of Flint. Totally, I was bombarded by 20 people over the weekend. And I don't turn anybody away, whether you live in the city or you live in the surrounding areas. I take time with you. I was bombarded, I counted the people over the, the places that I had been. And I had exactly 20 people, and this is a referral to Mr. Ambrose, who is our emergency manager and who speaks for the city. And I really didn't have an answer for these people. So, I'm trusting that Mr. Ambrose will get me this answer as soon as possible, like ASAP, and it could have been yesterday. The question I was asked, if the City of Flint is broke, and it's a known fact that we have been known to be a broke city, how can you take a person, bring a person, hire a person for $140,000, plus give them money to move here? And I told him, "I'll have an answer." So, my question is, is the city still broke? And if the city's not broke, where did you get the money for the person? Did you get it off the backs of the people that pay or try to pay for their water bills? Because people want to know these answers. These are everyday people that are struggling, and they see these things, they read these things, and they want to know these things. And I really didn't have an answer for them. So, I'm hoping that Mr. Ambrose, or, Mr. Mayor, you're here this evening, you might have an answer.
We can send that as a referral, Councilwoman.
Well, I'll leave it as a referral for Mr. Ambrose. I appreciate that. And my hat is off to the Flint Police Department. Thank you, Chief, for the murder that was in my ward, the young lady that was found over on Donley. And we have a suspect that was caught relatively quickly. And I thank you for that. And I thank you for the helicopter that was flying all weekend. We thank you for that, my constituents do thank you for that. So, actually, that's all I have. But I was in great concern when I had no answer to let the people know if the city is broke, not broke, or partially broke.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Nelson?
I'll be very brief. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to say something, and I want to say it, and then I'm through with it. First thing, I, I think that Ms. Brown does a fine job of being our clerk, and I think she keeps good records. And so, I voted today because it didn't make sense to vote for something that's already being done. We have a good record keeper. You see what I'm saying? So, I, I don't know, I was very confused about what was moved and to clear up, and I thank you for what you, the information that I received. But I think the clerk job, she does an excellent job. And then, this last thing that I must say to my colleagues. I will support you in your wards because you know your constituents better than I do. And I think it's a disrespect on my part to go against something that you know better than me. It would be like you in my house and you asked me to use the restroom, but you tell me where the restroom is. You've never been in my house before, you wouldn't know. That's just me, that's nobody else. That's the way I feel, that the people you represent, you know. And I think it's just the right thing to do. I, 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 I won't buck against it unless there's some strong evidence that otherwise I should. I'm through, Mr. President, I thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nelson. Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to say I thank you for coming to giving a, a report on Veolia, which I have already been expressing, and but you, what you did, you corroborated my, my suspicion and my allegations towards this Veolia group. Thank you for coming all the way from Detroit. Yeah, she drove here 58 miles to get here, and thank you for coming, I appreciate that. And I think the residents of this city appreciate your presence as well. Thank you very much. I'm very concerned about this water issue, but I'd like to say something in defense of myself and also my colleagues, that my foundation paid $80,000 for a water rate study to a group, to a company outside of this state called Ratfield. Ratfield made a report saying that the water rates need to go up in order to sustain the water plant and the... water plant and the infrastructure for the next 50 years. I don't know if, I think I'm saying that right. The emergency manager allowed us to do amendments to a budget, amendments to a budget. Under Home Rule Act, based on the charter, the mayor submits a budget to council, council makes amendments or do whatever they're going to do with it, send it back to the mayor or the emergency manager, they look over and send it back to council, and we make a finalized vote on that. The emergency manager didn't allow us to vote on that final vote when it came to that budget on higher water rates. I want to give proper information in defense of myself and defense of my colleagues. We never had the opportunity to make a final vote on that budget when it involved higher water rates. The water rates was arbitrarily, unilaterally dealt with with the emergency manager because of the $80,000 that the Mott Foundation paid to do a report on water rate studies. $80,000 from his perspective was not going to be spent in vain, and he embraced and took upon himself that report. And I would not charge council nor myself for voting on something that never occurred. I paid $236 last week on the water bill. Two months ago, I paid 317. At that particular time, I couldn't afford water. Why would I vote on something that I cannot afford? That's like me hanging myself, and I think my colleagues don't want to afford something that they shouldn't have to afford as well. So I have to say that, because I know this goes on the record, and I know people on Channel 17 sees this. And I do not want people to believe that we voted on a budget, which the emergency manager never allowed us to do. Now, back to my statement. I share everybody's frustration in regards to this quality water and also the high cost. I'm hoping very well, or very much, very much, I'm praying, that the lawsuit that has been initiated goes through, or that the residents of this city will finally be treated fairly and with justice. Because there is a lawsuit that's in, that Scott Kincaid, Council Kincaid, and Judge Washington put in effect, and should be coming up for a ruling very soon. And hopefully, that lawsuit renders the justice for the residents that we've always been waiting for. I just spoke to Mr. Washington, but I may say Judge Washington. And from his point, and I think I'm saying it correct, is that water service charges is illegal. I can't really get off into the specifics in that, but that's what he told me, that water service charges should be considered illegal. And that's basically the biggest bulk of what you're paying, because if you leave your house and you stay gone for a month and don't use a drip of water, you still will be charged $58.64. And I think that's a little overrated, if a person is not using the water. And to be charging somebody for something that's not considered quality is a great form of injustice. I pray to God every day that someday we get the justice that we always looked for, and maybe someday that justice will prevail. But I do hope that we get, you know what, I'm through, I don't really want to say nothing else, because this is an issue that has just gone on for so long, and that people can't get the justice that they need. I spoke to three people today, and one woman showed me a rash on her body, it looked like it's eating her skin up. And that bothered me, because you could see bubbles all on her back. I'm not a doctor, so I can't say if that's where this calls from, but she said she didn't have that until she started getting taken showers in that water. And she also stated that she has a compromised immune system. It makes me feel so helpless, as an elected official, when your residents talk to you about situations that is illing them, and there's nothing you can do about it. It kind of makes you wonder and ask yourself, why are you in the position that you're in if there's nothing that you can do? But then I tell myself on the other end, that if God didn't want me in this position, then I wouldn't be in this position. So it's got to be something at the end of the road that's going to bring some form of light to everybody else's darkness. So I yield my right to Councilman Winfrey. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Winfrey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I have been listening to Councilman Kincaid for the last two meetings of this council body, whether it was in the committee or the whole other committees. And I want to go on record as publicly supporting him regarding the trucks and the purchase of vehicles and those kinds of things. I think it's, I think it's, well, it's sickening to hear that we're doing, we're purchasing vehicles or leasing vehicles from folks that's not in this locale when we continue to talk about economic development. So I want to go on record as saying I do support him and all of his efforts, and I can't wait to hear what he has to report tonight. And then finally, I would like to say to my colleagues that I would like to write some kind of legislation where those who are in businesses in the city of Flint who sell tobacco and alcohol in this city to have to go to some kind of informational forum annually so that they can hear the sentiments of those of us who are in the substance abuse field and how their products are somehow getting into the hands of our youth. And I would like for them to be a partner with other organizations who are interested in a healthier community, no more selling, or at least some kind of way that we can make a dent in selling singles and certainly selling alcohol to youth. And I'm going to be beginning to write that legislation as I do a little bit more research on how that's done. And I would like for my colleagues to support me in that effort. Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem. We'll send that as a referral to the city attorney's office, and then you guys can communicate back and forth about what needs to happen there. Councilwoman Galloway?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to add support. Well, I want to ask that the emergency manager and the financial director would be more conscious with the dollars spent, and I too share with my colleagues a concern that Councilman Kincaid is going to share. One, in that even if we do have companies that are not submitting, and Councilman Kincaid will talk about it, where only possibly one company submitted a proposal for leased vehicles, that even in the event that that happens, and I don't know if there's a way, I don't know if because this is all that's presented, we must go with this, but I think that it would be financially irresponsible not to at least look and see what other alternatives are out there. When you look at a lease of, per se, $380, and the possibility that we could have leased a vehicle for $280, if that's on a monthly basis, you're talking about $4,000 a month, you're talking about $50,000 a year on a three-year lease, that's $150,000, not to mention if maintenance is included or not included. And so I would just say to the administration that we owe the residents that we are responsible to, to be financially responsible. And the results of that are, this city has experienced a lot of mismanagement where monies are concerned. And because of that, we find ourselves where we are in 2015, and even going into the latter years, imposing increases on a population that can't afford it because we weren't wise when we were living in plenty and when we were living in prosperity. And so I just again want to say it was an irresponsible decision, if it is true that we could have saved $100 or so on a vehicle, and we're talking about 47 possibly a month, we just, we just got to do better. And so I just wanted to put that for the record.
Thank you, Councilwoman Galloway. Councilwoman Van Buren?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Two things that I really want to mention, and I'll probably keep mentioning it for the next couple of months, because I don't see any solution right away. But the first one is, I want to, for everyone to think about the challenges that our public safety community is facing, our firefighters, our police officers, every day that they're out there in the community, dealing with keeping us safe and also making sure that they will be able to return the next day to continue working. We don't have as many as we should have out on the streets, that was pointed out in the consultant's report. As we work through the budget process, hopefully, we'll be able to make some improvements, I don't know. But I want the community to, whenever they have a chance to see a police officer, see a firefighter, let them know you appreciate what they do out there. Police Chief Mr. Tolbert and Police Chief Cox are really doing an outstanding job with the limited resources, and if continue to stay with us, I hope they will be with us for a long, long time. There's many things that they have come up with, because we don't have a lot of resources, and it shows that we can do something. But I think it's not just on their part, I think it's also on the citizens' part, too. Anything we can do to help reduce crime, anything we can do to make our families safe at home with smoke detectors, you know, educating our family and our children, you know, I think it can be a two-way street and make us more stronger. I think that's even shown in reports from the police department with the community to help report crime. I notice a lot of tips are being turned into Crime Stoppers. I think there's been a lot of apprehensions of criminals after crimes have been committed. So we need to still be out there sending a message to whoever's responsible for causing these problems, that we will continue to fight to keep this city strong. So I just like to always say thank you to the chiefs and to the departments and their staff. The second thing is, especially after we met at MTA, at the Citizens Advisory on the water problem, you could tell, you know, it's not an easy situation, the solutions are not right up there, we have to work on what we can. But I notice in our discussions through our committees, it's always been brought up about affordability of the water. It's not just only the quality, it has to be the affordability for everyone, no matter if you are a homeowner, if you are a tenant, if you are a business owner. We've got to make it where it's affordable, there has to be some options out there, some plans that have been implemented in other communities that makes it more easier for the community to deal with. They say water is not going, the rates are not going down, they're going to go up. Well, we need to be prepared, and we need to make it where we're listening to the citizens and we're working with them. Because if they're not able to pay, I don't know how this city can continue, because we won't be able to take care of business. So those are my thoughts for today, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kincaid?
Thank you, Mr. President. And please stop me when my five minutes are up, because I'm sure I'm going to use all of my five minutes. First of all, let me tell my colleagues on the city council that on October 27, 2014, the emergency manager entered a resolution to purchase 47 or to lease 47 vehicles, and I believe they purposely did not put it on the website, and they didn't put it on the website, and this issue didn't come up until I raised it in committee last week. And I think there was a reason for that. I think what they were trying to do is get all of these vehicles assembled to the 12th Street Yard, get the names of the various departments and organizations that we're going to use these vehicles, and then put them out on the street before we could do anything. But I drove through 12th Street Yard, and I seen these trucks setting around, some of them with names on them, some of them with, brand new, covered with snow, sitting there at the 12th Street Lot, Parking Lot. And it upset me, and I'll tell you why it upset me. The city of Flint has asked General Motors Corporation for contributions and donations for this community for years. I think a few years ago, they gave a million dollars to the Cultural Center, if I remember. I think last year, they had an event down at Water Street Parking Lot, or the Surface Parking Lot, where they came and gave away hundreds of thousands of dollars to charitable organizations in our community. Is that right, Mayor? General Motors and the employees at General Motors, when the Mott Foundation bought a smokehouse for the fire department to take around this community to train and teach children, when your house is on fire, how to get down, how to get out, to be able to create a safe environment. So the fire department got this beautiful smokehouse. They had no way to get it around this community. General Motors and the employees, General Motors donated all of the parts, the employees donated all of their time, and they gave the city of Flint a Chevrolet heavy-duty pickup truck. They gave it to us, to be able to pull that smokehouse around this community, to train children how to get out of a fire. And they took it to the schools, they took it to the parks, they took it to neighborhood organizations. And the employees in the corporation have given this community tremendous amount of money. If this resolution that the emergency manager signed, who happened to be here when General Motors happened to give us that pickup truck for the smokehouse, if this resolution would have ever come to this body, I know we would have denied it nine to nothing. We would have denied it nine to nothing. And why I'm so passionate about this is because this lease program was done with a sole provider, and I think we're getting screwed. In fact, I know we're getting screwed. The taxpayers of this community are getting ripped off. And we need to change that. And I'm going to allow the mayor, and not so much the mayor, but the city emergency manager and the city administrator to correct this problem before it gets too long. And I'll tell you how they can do it. On October 9, 2014, Garrett Jones, our purchasing director, sent a letter to Mr. Jerry Ambrose while he was the finance director. I'm not going to read it all, I'm going to read one paragraph. It says, "Please note that if the city decides that it does not want to continue to lease, we have the option to terminate the lease and return the vehicles." And I'm saying to this administration, to this emergency manager, who was the finance director at the time of this purchase, that we do not put any vehicles that are not in service, any vehicles that are in service, we take them out until we decide what we're going to do. We never bid to see what a purchase was. Genesee County Motor Pool, they purchased their vehicles, and they turn them over every three years. We get people that go out and purchase vehicles, and we keep them 10 and 12 years. And in fact, it's so bad, our vehicles are so bad, that we have 12 or 14 tandem axle plow trucks in the city of Flint. That's how many we have to plow the snow and put salt on the street. At no given time, at no given time, do we have more than six in operation. At no given time in the city of Flint do we have more than six. And we're buying pickup trucks for foremen, supervisors, cost center managers to drive around the city, we're buying equinoxes for people out at the water service center, out at the water treatment plant, out at the waste treatment facility, supervisors to drive to the city for meetings. And we're buying all-wheel drive, the most expensive equinox that we can purchase on a lease price, we got all-wheel drive.
Councilman, your five minutes is-
In the all-wheel- And the all-wheel drives are because we only got six tandem trucks that can plow the streets. And the cost center manager and fleet manager thinks we need all-wheel drives because we can't plow the streets in the city of Flint. And I'm demanding, I'm demanding an explanation and a plan. I don't want to just stop. I want a plan. I want a plan on the future of purchasing, leasing, providing vehicles to the city to provide a service to the residents of the city of Flint. And I think we all deserve that. And we need a plan. We don't just need one individual to decide what type of vehicles they want and to go out and get them. And this is a laundry list. I mean, some are gasoline engines, some are diesel engines, some are three-quarter ton heavy-duty, some are one-and-a-half-ton pickup trucks. I mean, it's a laundry list, you know. Hey, hey, Mike Rule, I want a four-wheel drive Chevrolet or Ford diesel pickup truck. Put one on the list, order it for me. I want to drive it for the next five years. That's how these vehicles got selected. Because we don't have a process in this city and we don't have a process in place. And I'm wrapping up, Mr. President. When you have a finance director, a purchasing director, and a fleet manager deciding on the vehicles of the city of Flint instead of a Department of Public Works director, there's something wrong with this process. Somebody that's responsible for providing service to the city of Flint isn't involved in this process, and it's wrong. And it's been wrong ever since the emergency manager put the fleet manager under the finance department. And, Mr. President, Mayor, city administrator, this issue with me is not going to stop. I'm going to talk about it here, but you don't want to know where I go next. Because, Mayor, you know where I'll go. And I'll be damned if I allow the General Motors Corporation to ever donate anything in the city of Flint for anything as long as we're driving Ford pickups that are built right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to put that on as a discussion item on finance?
Mr. President? The administration knows where I stand with this. I think they know where we all stand. I think they owe us an answer. I think they owe us an explanation. And I don't think they want me to take it to the next step.
Councilwoman Galloway has asked that it be put on in her committee, so we'll do that just so that it's in our face.
When we do have that brought, Madam Clerk, if we can ask that the rationale behind the cost, I'd like to know what department heads are driving vehicles and why they're driving vehicles. I'd like all of that to really be spelled out. Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
It's been moved and supported.
Mr. President, so you going to discriminate? We just marched in Selma to get folks rights, and you going to play a game of eight and exclude nine in front of the public? Did you forget it's a council person?
Councilman, I'm not recognized.
Okay, then we got discrimination. Is it based on ward, race, sex, what?
Ward and sex.
And race.
No, just ward and sex.
And if y'all sit here and adjourn and let him do it, you're just as wrong as the one who trying to do it, and I'm going to see what happens.
Been a motion to adjourn.
So let's see if you adjourn.
And there's been support. Can we have...
Now, let's see if the vote yes or no. You going to skip me on that? Let's see, black folks, this is race.
Your vote, okay. Mr. Mays?
No.
Ms. Popla?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Mr. Galloway, Ms. Galloway?
No.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, three no.
We adjourned.